I have a motion. I have a motion on the table. Is there a second? I'll second Commissioner Shapiro, the motion for Commissioner Shapiro's Vice Chair. Any discussion?
Sorry, are you allowed to do that?
He's a voting member. Voting members can.
Okay, I thought that before the chair, like I thought I remember when I was chair not being able to second the motion.
Let me take a look. I have the bylaws. I just happen to be here, so.
Are I technically the chair now?
Not yet.
And in fact.
Oh, we are.
In fact, Joy should be presiding over this matter.
That's right, you are the chair.
Thank you for bringing that up, but I am going to answer your question. I don't want to hold you guys up because now he.
I mean, should Joy make that motion as the chair?
I'll be happy to take a look at that. So. Do you have your bylaws open, Kristen?
I do, I'm looking.
That's certainly, it's not the case at council, but I think because he's a voting member.
They are voting. But to vote all questions, preside. Moving the agenda along, I can even speak. It's kind of mute to that.
Why don't we start over again? Take. All questions. Any motions for Vice Chair? Inform me.
I will. I will not, I will nominate Commissioner Shapiro.
Second. What are we waiting for?
I think we're waiting for the executive term of what the chair may say.
I don't think, I don't think it discusses typically the.
The bylaws are silent on that and I.
Typically, the chair does not make.
Stop from making motions before I'd like to review that. I'd love to review that. So Chair is a voting member and can make motions and can take seconds. It's probably not the best form, but.
Can you repeat that? You repeat that.
Yeah, it's the. The bylaws are silent on that. I will look at, I'm also going to look at the ordinance, but in the meantime, I just invite you guys to go ahead and proceed.
Okay, can we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
I would say that I've known Lisa for a little while to tell you how long would we give away our ages, but she's, she's been on boards before. She was on the secondary one board for a long time, the city council, the findings, I mentioned, she's been a board member and we can't hear you. It's too much people. How about now? Okay. And yeah, she knows, she knows her way around the board. So that's would be my discussion. Any other discussion, Derek?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. I, I made a list today of my interests in support of a chair or vice chair. And what I'm looking for is insurance of the order of business and decorum under our bylaws, of course, but also adherence to our enacting ordinance, especially as it pertains to duties and responsibilities, as well as adherence to the 10 duties that are laid out in our bylaws of the chair. It's a big, big role to take on. I appreciate you being willing to take that on. And I'm hoping that as chair, you will help the commissioners accomplish the responsibilities laid out in the bylaws, which are, I think, pretty large. And then, and also do the work to hold the commission accountable for our work and, and drive the agenda. And so I appreciate. And drive the agenda. And so I appreciate the willingness of anyone to volunteer for it. A year ago. Commissioner Riley questioned my interest in the chair position and.
Point of order. I think we're deliberating on the Vice Chair position. Are you focusing these comments on the Vice Chair position?
It was both Chair and Vice Chair. So.
I didn't hear that.
And so, and it says I want to support a chair and vice chair. So. And so that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Shapiro?
Yes.
Commissioner McColl? Absent. Commissioner Hazel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Di Amato?
Yes.
Commissioner Volkart?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you can never be sick.
Madam Chair, just to the question asked about. The chair voting as a voting member, I, the, the ordinance is also silent on motions and. Restrict, restricting the chair from motions or seconds.
Maybe we should. Talk about that at a future date. If I see my pin.
That's my.
I do, yeah.
Okay. Okay. List of things to do. Next on the agenda is.
Seven, here you go. You can have this. It's a 6.2. Or no, did we move that to proposition? Okay, thank you.
Okay, is, next is 6.2, building orientation slash tree planting.
Commissioner Volkart, are you going to speak to this?
Yeah, I will. You can call me Commissioner Riley on the computer though. So I sent out to you all what I referenced at the November meeting. And I think I said at the planning commission meeting, I, I may, I know I said it at the, the council meeting, so they kind of run together, but. I wasn't on the planning commission at the time in 2021, but I certainly missed this issue. I testified before you. On the public hearing for SPR 2021-15. And we don't have to. Focus on that specifically per se. What I'm trying to determine. And. I'm kind of trying to follow the mayor's advice to, you know, I, I wish I had come and taken this to the commission first. And gotten your input on this because what I'm trying to determine is. Whether or not we can orient our residential buildings in our commercial zones away from the street. In this case, Highway 99. We looked at the photo back in November. And. And so that's what I'm trying to. I would like the commission to look at. This is a lot of information, so it may be better. Following, digesting it and discussing it in February. I don't know what's on the agenda in February, so. That may be bad timing as well, but. It doesn't really matter to me if. If we are, if builders are allowed to orient residential buildings. Away from the street, then I just want to move forward with appealing. To the council to consider changing the code because I don't think we, other than for ver, for certain circumstances, which is awkward, like cottage housing. Cottage clusters and stuff, you can imagine that sort of design on lesser roads, not on. Collectors or main roads running through town or the highway in this case. And so I sent this to you just to get input. On interpretation and. And. Yeah, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at it because it came in today. So, but that was one aspect.
Well, I'm, I'm, I guess I am not very clear in what you're, what you're. What the issue is and what you want from us. So I live right by that property and the entrance. Is not facing 99. It's on the side. It is facing the courtyard, if you want to call it. And I thought that was actually okay. So I'm really not too sure exactly what you're talking and what, I mean, are you looking for like to go back to that builder and tell them to redo?
Oh, no, no, no.
So I just want to be really clear what you're.
No, the planning commission approved this. Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. The planning commission approved this. And as I said in November, I missed it as well because I was caught up in the, in the street tree issue. And then, and but I, once it started being built, I was like, oh, can you orient a. A residential building right up on the sidewalk away from the streetscape? It didn't make sense. And so I was looking at it and it, I do see language in here though, that allows you, you don't have to orient toward the street. In design guidelines, you can, you can orient toward a courtyard. And so that was my, it was like, oh, well, so maybe that's, but then I look at the definition of court. Courtyard isn't defined in our code, but court is and yards defined. And it looks like you can't from my interpretation, but I misinterpret things. So from time to time, so. So I just wanted to look at it. It's not, there is no going back to that, but I just, if I know that we can do that. In the city, I'm certainly going to advocate for taking away a builder's right or our subjective right through that discretionary type three process. To allow that because I think it's aesthetically a really. Poor design to have your entryway and facade facing away from the highway. So. Yeah, sorry. I wasn't, I mean, I was just writing notes and, and that was today. So it didn't, you know, I'm sure it's not totally clear, but no.
What do you, what day was that discussed? Do you have the date so I can go back and listen to the tape? I'd be curious to.
Oh, February 15th of 2021.
It was 2022. Because I wasn't on the committee. I was on, it was February 2022.
2022, you're right. It's SPR 2021. Sorry, 2022.
There's a patch here, sorry.
Yeah, my apology.
This is my second meeting. That's why.
Yeah, I guess, I guess for me what comes up is that if we're trying to create a pedestrian friendly. Attractive. Corridor on 99. If we're not going to change the code, I think we need to look at ways of mitigating things like that. I mean, what could we do? To make that space more, more friendly and more. Not eye catching, but more.
Aesthetically, aesthetically pleasing. Yeah, right. Yeah.
Did you have any concerns?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking so with the businesses that are there, the little strip mall thing, there are no entrances on Highway 99. It's all. You drive into the parking area and like where the Polish restaurant used to be and that all the entrances are facing the parking lot, not facing 99. And if somebody was pulling into their residence there off of 99, you know, the driveway would go around. They wouldn't be, they have to walk around. The structure to walk in a front door. So I mean, unless they were walking from there to downtown or something, but. I'm just picturing the businesses that are there and they don't seem odd. Maybe it's just because they were designed to look. More, and it wouldn't look like the back of the house, I suppose, but I'm just wondering what the difference is.
I think that's a great point. And I, I thought you could access through the highway on the commercial, but regardless, it is a good point that through design. Could be simply that through design, it might take like, if there's a fake entrance there, it's sort of like, well, it doesn't, but at least, I don't know. And maybe, maybe the commission doesn't find that it, I just found it, it sort of jumped out to me. I was like, I thought the commercial looks great. And then I'm like, there's a two story gable end right off the sidewalk on Highway 99 and it just looked, and that's why I brought the picture in in November.
Commissioners.
So that was probably the only way they could have fit that complex was going that direction, right? Because they couldn't, didn't have the room to have it. Face the highway, right? And that, the area that they had.
True.
Not that it was aesthetically pleasing, but.
Yeah, because you pull into each unit.
Right.
And you have grass, you have a yard and a driveway. And that's why, so I wondered if our code was sufficient enough. By prohibiting, you can face a courtyard, which is more than a yard. It's a, or a court is more than just a yard, it says. It's a bizarre language. But it, it, I don't think. As we approved it, but that's just my interpretation that it, that it should have, that you, they couldn't have done that. But it, it is interesting, the notion of having, what if they had just put, built a door into the wall or a couple of. Additional glass, because you get the glass requirements.
The design guidelines 18. 1896. Is that, are those guidelines for every zone that you put in the emails that they're in the findings? But is 1896040, is that design guidelines for just that zone?
No, that's the guidelines for a type three design guideline.
A discretionary process. So, so remember they get to choose between type two or type three and they can.
The. Second part of your discussion was about trees. So are there any landscape requirements that would go there that would make it less?
So I was getting clarity on that, what, because I was listening to the meeting before I came down, eating dinner, thinking, wow, I'm going to go down early, 15 minutes early. And so, and it was interesting because. There was actually discussion, what the engineer for the applicant was saying is like, we don't want to plant on top of the fiber optic cable. The person from the new company that took over Century Link, I can't understand Lumen or is it Lumen or whatever their name is. Their regular person was gone and they had to contact Klamath Falls and Klamath Falls said, well, we'd prefer that you don't. Plant above fiber optic cable. And so, which was confusing to the commission. You guys were even asking about that saying, well. You know, I think one of the ex officios, Panam RF at the time said. Is that, that's not clear direction, but. And I'm sorry, I digress. So they. They were worried about that. They were going to bump them back on the other side of the sidewalk instead of planting in the planting strips. And, but what I've discovered was that the motion that was made. By Commissioner Davis, seconded by the Amato, was that I move, we approve SPR 2021-15 with additional condition. That the applicant coordinate with the T U F C to plant street trees. And so, so I think that. Sort of removes the concern I had because the, the, the concern, Public Works did a heck of a job catching it. I was like, great to see that they had caught it and pointed it out. But then the concern was that it was, they were going, they would maybe. Be able to show Public Works that they didn't need to plant street trees because they could argue that, they could show them a document that said that. That it would damage fiber optic cable. And so. I, I do interpret the code to say that you shall, street trees shall be planted. And it does say, and Kristen provided this language, which I appreciate, is that it says. It says that no person shall plant. Let me, let me read this. No person shall plant a tree. Where the critical root zone of maturity, the CRZ is, is within the public, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. No person shall plant any tree anywhere in the city so as to adversely affect public utilities. And so I, I thought about that and the way I interpreted it was if street trees are required, but thou shall not. Adversely affect public utilities. My interpretation of that is that becomes a burden on the applicant. It's like you have to plant your street trees, but you can't adversely impact the utilities. And so. Which if. Maybe someday it may be argued that. That that's a, a high burden. It's just that we've been planting street trees throughout the city. All over utilities. I know we had the problem on West Street, which wasn't fiber optic, but. That was my concern is that we were going to maybe set a precedent for. Ending the planting of street trees simply because we've got fiber optic cable running everywhere. And so, and I do think that motion cleared it up and. And I just didn't, I made the mistake of not actually going and looking at the minutes and finding the motion and, and going the wrong order.
So, thank you. So the. Commissioner Volkart told me that, that part of the motion was not part of the findings. Is that right? It didn't get into the findings. That were signed.
I'd have to look at the findings. I don't have them in front of me.
It may be in the final order. I just didn't.
I think it is in the final order to, to consult with the urban forestry.
I just couldn't find it there. So.
And, and so they, they can't get a certificate of occupancy until. They've done that.
Well, if they can plant street trees, they, they will. If they can plant them on their property, they cannot plant it if it's in a utility easement. They cannot plant over utilities if it interferes with utilities. We've had that issue on Talent Avenue and on West Street. So I mean, that's part of, unfortunately, a lot of our parkways are utilities easements.
So the, the, the strip, so it goes street dirt sidewalk?
The parkways between the sidewalk and the street. A lot of times those, those end up being public utility easements. That's where everybody runs the fiber optics, the sewer, the water, all that stuff ends up running down there. And so. It, it, it doesn't make sense to plant over that because then it damages those and the street and the trees will be taken out. And not replanted. So it is an issue throughout the city and we, the more we've dealt with. Planting trees and we've gotten a lot of trees donated, it's becoming a bigger issue. So we're looking for places to plant them. For instance. Wagner, Wagner Street and Rays, where they're going to be removing all those trees. And putting them on to their property. We're asking they put them on their property and take them out of the sidewalk because they're damaging the sidewalk. So I mean, those are, so there are ways of getting around that. We, we will require them to plant trees. We can ask them to plant double the trees in the. In their parking area and that's going to be a requirement anyway with the, the, our CFA requirement. So. That they have like 40% coverage of trees. So.
That's in the CF.
That's in the CF. Or it's close to it. We can.
Just a thought on that because. I mean, I totally get that you're going to, on a utility easement, you've got more than just fiber optic too. It's like lots of stuff. But I, I think it was interesting by, by make, by. Providing the condition that they consult with urban forestry. They automatically got, I mean, and I made the point that urban for, as when I was commenting is that urban forestry also had all that grant. Stuff going on with putting trees in the ground. And so there is an advantage there as well as those guys know how to troubleshoot that. You know, the example of where you're having sidewalks broken up, a lot of times that's just a species problem. You know, and they, they know how to plant large shade canopy trees that won't mess up your sidewalk or get into your utilities. Great example was the Wagner Plaza with the Chinese pistache that they were planting there to make sure that they didn't interfere with the parking lot. And so. I was, I was just glad that. The ex officio was on it. You guys were all on it after I revisited it. I don't know how I couldn't remember the outcome, but I couldn't. I couldn't. And, and I was encouraged that. That. The public works noticed that. That was great. And then you guys jumped on it.
Are you, are you. Proposing that we revisit orientation? Is that what you want?
Well, yes, thank you. I, I do, I do want to understand if the orientation issue. And if it takes a motion to the council, I, I just need an answer because I want to advocate. An appeal to the council to change the code if we can orient those buildings away from the streetscape. So, I mean, I would.
Or, or. Or have design standards that would, okay, so I think you probably get more mileage from the. Or have design standards that would, yeah, okay. So, uh, I think you probably get more mileage from the council if it came from the planning commission as a recommendation. So, let's, let's start it to do list and, and. Order it up. And, um.
Should I make a motion for a recommendation though, or?
I would. Oh, no.
Okay.
I think we should talk about it and give it something, not just.
All right.
You know.
Yeah, fair enough. Yeah, yeah, good point.
Okay, so we'll figure out when we're gonna get that on the page. Oh. Wait, we're not in a public heard part of the meeting, I'm sorry.
When is that? That's coming up next soon.
We've already had, we've already had, um, um. You opened. Comments on non agenda items. Do, were you trying to address this issue, mister, like I said? Uh, what, do, do you wanna?
Did you want to talk about this issue? Could you come up and, and, uh, tell us, tell us who you are, your city of?
Let me, let me, real quick, let me move to, uh, suspend, uh, our, uh, order of business in order to take a public comment. On, will you entertain that motion?
Yes. Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. What's your name? I'm sorry. What's your last name, Matt?
That's the old good night in.
I'll, I'll get him one. And, and Mr. Lichtenstein, we only require that you state your last name because it's part of our requirement. Um, just for the public record is all. It's, we don't, we don't put you on a mailing list or anything, so.
Commissioner Volkart will get that information to you. Uh, did you, or was that you? Okay, so, uh, the next thing on the agenda is. Representatives to the council, which I don't. Think we're ready for that yet. And then propositions and remarks. And, uh. Did I swap something?
It's okay. You had it reversed, but it's fine. It doesn't, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Lisa, do you have any propositions or remarks? And.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Volkart, do you have any?
Um, I do, but let me hold mine until somebody else has spoken.
I do have a comment or a remark, whatever. So at the study session. Couple weeks ago, like January fourth, when we talked about the T, um, the, the, um, T G M project and the highway ninety-nine green lights. Um, there was a couple of, uh, comments about my participation in that committee and I just wanna clarify for the record. Um, I was asked to be part of the citizens advisory committee, uh, by Jordan, but as a resident, not as a planning commissioner. And it was two meetings that I attended. One was just sort of informational. The second one was where we took a lot of picture. We, we looked at photos and we got to choose what we liked, how, what looked best. And that was it. There was no real reason for me to report back to the council. There was a comment about why didn't I come back to the planning, not council, sorry, to the planning commission and report on my participation. In that advisory committee. So I just wanna go on the record that, one, I was not asked as a planning commissioner to be on that committee. And two, with too many, there was really nothing to report anyway. So I just wanted to, but that's all.
So when, when, uh, Jordan asked you, she said specifically.
She said, my quote. Uh, you and I briefly discussed, uh, talked about a year ago, your experience on the east side of Highway ninety-nine. And how annoying difficult it was to get to the downtown core. And, um, so that's what, what it was about, so.
Okay, thanks. Uh. Mark, do you have anything?
I don't.
No, okay, so, uh, oh, we're back. Commissioner Volkart.
Yeah, I just, uh. For Mr. Lichtenstein, um. Two ten North Pacific Highway is the address. It's the old Goodnight Inn location. It's the commercial residential now. Uh, go ahead and I, I've got more.
Okay, so, uh, I, I don't. I know you said that, uh, the, um. The Evan Archer project was remanded back to us and.
I'm sorry, what?
The.
Rezone CPA.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yes. So it is coming back to us.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I, I have, uh, information about the wetland and, and, uh. Commissioner Volkart, and I went down there and, and it's quite clear where it is and there's some.
Yeah, I've talked to, uh, Robert Slaton about that. That's, uh, they put a pipe in to overflow the creek there. That's what that wetlands is. And the original wetlands was irrigation that they mitigated for.
Okay, I, I don't understand that, but anyway, uh.
Well, I, she's referring to what we saw, the.
The depression?
The, yeah, but the container, but it actually flows the other way. It flows into the creek.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a, yeah, there's a pipe.
But it doesn't come off the creek. It goes back to the creek.
Yeah, it's from, yeah, according to Robert, it's.
But anyway, it's, it's a state designated wetland. And, uh, the pipe I was.
It's a local wetlands. Cause I looked on the, it's not on our state wetlands designation. It's a local wetlands.
Okay, uh, I tell you what, we're gonna drop this for now and I'm gonna come see you and we'll talk about it, okay?
Why don't you wait until the application comes back and they'll discuss it?
Um, okay.
Cause that would be, that, then they'll have, they'll have all the answers of what they can and can't do with it.
Who's that?
The applicant.
Okay, uh, the other, the other things I wanted to talk about. Is the things that were on the to-do list that, um. Yeah, did that, uh. So I wanna add, talking about the, the orientations on there. And on the cluster housing, I wanted to ask the commission, I wanted to take all the information, the cluster housing and give it to the commission. In some way. And I was thinking about a PowerPoint or. I wanted to figure out from you guys or, you know, notes in the. In the ordinance, I wanted to figure out from you guys how we could look at that again to move forward with it. How, what would you like me to do? Would you like me to make a PowerPoint out of what, all the stuff I talked to you about, or would you rather just have? Like an essay, what do you, words or pictures?
I, I'd like a PowerPoint.
Okay.
PowerPoint.
I think that'd be helpful since we're probably gonna be having a new commissioner who's gonna have to get up to speed and.
We're gonna have a new commissioner.
Okay, and, uh. The other things that were on my to-do list that I, when I first talked to you guys was, uh, we still need to do some reviewing of the architectural review. Ordinance, cause even though we have a committee again and it's alive and well and walking. Uh, there's still parts of that ordinance that just have giant holes in it, like, it says, go here to, you know, read about what the commission. Does, and you go there and there's nothing there. And so we really need to tighten that up.
Sorry, is this on the website you're talking about?
In the ordinances.
In the ordinances, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about ordinances. So, so, uh, orientation of buildings and architectural review. Um, I, I would like for us to have a work study on the climate friendly and equitable communities. That's a priority for me. Because, uh, I, I think Lisa, excuse me, Commissioner Shapiro and I were the only ones that went to the meeting about it. And it's, it's kinda huge and we need to, everybody needs to know about it. So I, I would like for us to schedule a work study, just to go over that.
Well, that's coming back to you for code amendments. So you're gonna be very involved in that.
I, I realize that, but I would like for us to have a work study about it so people can understand what it is. Before we're looking at the law that we're gonna make around it. Because it's a, it's a big deal. And, uh, so. February is a long month this year. An extra day. Is there, could we do a, a work study? Uh, like the second week of February? How would that work for people's?
Possibly.
So in second week, we could have fifth of the twelve.
The, what day does February start on?
On a Thursday.
Oh. Uh, I have.
So, uh, Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are you calling a study session for the purpose of getting a presentation on the CFA?
I, I, uh. Yes.
Thank you.
So how about the fifth? Wait.
You mean the sixth?
The sixth.
I cannot on the sixth.
You can't on the sixth. What's the next Tuesday?
Thirteen.
How about the thirteen?
Thirteen.
Possibly. I'm, I'm, there's just gonna be a week I'm going there, uh, to, off the ido, so I'm just not sure which.
Thirteen? Okay, is that okay, Kristen?
I mean, I don't think I'll be in town, but you can certainly have a work session.
Okay, I guess.
I'm trying to get out of town for.
I guess I can get some information together for it, so. Will you do the, the other parts of the, uh, noticing? For us, okay. February thirteenth, uh, do you wanna do it earlier than six thirty?
Yeah.
Sixth earliest, right? Sixth earliest or?
I think six, I can't do it earlier than six. Would that be okay?
Okay. Okay.
Helps with accessibility to the public too. Mr. Riley, can I make a comment too? Hey, um, regarding, um, architectural review, I was gonna ask staff if it's possible to, I had looked at. The building next door. I wanted to see the architectural review notes. And I guess, and there's a permit, but. Is there, uh, is it possible to get meeting notes posted on the website so that we can track architectural review like, um?
I could give you the minutes. It's always, we're only taking minutes. I can give you the minutes of the meeting.
Could you enclose those in our packet?
But did they still, are they still submitting plans and stuff the way they, and, and so it, does that stuff ever?
That's the response to all the plans. I, I mean, you can, you can do a public records or like us, or come in and look at the file anytime.
And because it's not ever gonna be posted on, under current planning, uh, or architectural review on the website, or?
Well, we just.
I mean, I'm just.
Training somebody to get going, so as soon as we get that happening, we're.
Okay, all right.
That's other priorities right now, but we will get there.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to understand that. And so if there's a way. We had talked about maybe, uh, just a summary of projects going on, so that, that's another way that. Uh, because you can't public records request or ask for something you don't know that's going on.
We can always let you look at the.
But you, you know what I mean? You can't ask for something if you don't, I don't know what's going on at architectural review, you know, uh. And so how do I, so if you could at least summarize, you know, what, because you're.
Just architectural review, is that what you're looking for, for all of the projects that we're doing?
Well, for it, like, for architectural reviews that stand out because I can't, I, I mean, I can go to current planning on the website and. Access all the site plan review and, and variants, whatever it might be. I can't find annexations on there, but they're rare. I get that.
Oh, yeah.
And then, um, but architectural review is the other thing that I can't, I don't know what's going on. And, and so I just want. Even if there's a summary from you at these meetings, like, by the way, we had, you know, architectural reviews handled two or three of these. Here are the addresses. Then I can, when I'm driving around town, I'm like, oh, I know that they're doing that architectural. I really appreciate that. Um, and then, uh, on the twenty-third of December at one fifteen AM, I sent a. My name was on the website and it said, emailplanningcommission@cityoftalent.org. You know, and my name was attached to chair and, and the email. So I sent the email saying, who receives, who receives this? Please respond. I don't know where this email goes. Do you know where planningmission@cityoftalent.org goes to? I was just like, I've never had.
I don't get cityoftalent.com. I get building, but not planning.
Yeah, it's weird. So I don't, and you never got that email, I'm sure. So you, I would have heard from you, so, um, I don't know if you. I know, if you have a chance.
Yeah, I'll ask.
Cause it loo, it makes it look like the chair, this is the chair's email. And it's like, well, that's gonna look bad if someone's email.
Was that on?
It's somewhere on the community development page. I don't, um.
Yeah, I can say that the Parks Commission at City of Talent goes to the Parks Chair.
Okay.
So it might just be a, um, it just might be a dormant.
Yeah.
That used to.
Maybe so.
Planning chair. It'd just be a matter of getting the, getting, getting it to the planning chair.
But that was all I had.
Thank you. Um, so the other. Look, orientation, uh, when we wanted to talk about annexation because there's a conflict there, so. We need to talk about those on an upcoming agenda and, and figure out how we want to fix them and element F.
Oh, yeah, good point.
So, we'll, we'll get that on an agenda. Is there anything else? Anybody, anybody?
Element F is our public facilities and, um, what is it? Public facilities and what element?
It's public, it's. Public.
Open space and public facilities. So are you talking about clear and objective standards? That's gonna come, that.
No, 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 it's different. It's, what it is is, um, or do you want me to explain?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh, we, yeah, we can talk about it some other time.
So, I just want you to all be aware, we have five grants we're working on, five.
Understand.
They're all gonna be code updates and they're all gonna be interrelated to eighteen and seventeen. So there won't be, I. There won't be any code amendments until these are, these, all these grants have been sifted through and everything gets. And then we'll, and then we'll move on to eighteen and seventeen and, and pick up all the low hanging fruit that we've discussed. That's.
I think element F is the complaint. It's not.
Right, but I, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So much time in the week.
Understood. Okay, I think that's your larger point, but I did wanna clarify that it's not title eighteen or title seventeen.
Yeah. We're getting a little.
That's okay.
Overwhelmed.
No, but in, I think, do you mind if I make a comment? I, I just wanted to say, I, I think that, um, I think what she's saying is that this is for us to work on because. The element F carryover was from our, uh, hearings officer saying that we have not, the city of talent has not. Properly incorporated element F into our zoning code and subdivision code. And so that's why we lost that lawsuit. Uh, was appealed by Luba and lost like fifty grand or whatever it was. Um, and so that's why it's been on our list for years now. It's like, oh, we've got it. We better deal with this. And I think she meant like, as a commission, I, but I don't know, so.
Okay, it's, okay, let's stop. So.
Okay.
What was item seven? I wrote down rep and now I'm.
Item seven? I'm sorry, what?
Agenda item seven, what was it?
It was, um, r- reports from active subcommittee.
Oh, that's right, okay, okay.
This, that's the one you flipped. It's okay.
Okay, we have no assignments to the council.
No reps.
Did we finish that? Are we off of what we were, cause I wanted to add one thing. You discussed architectural review. Architectural Review Committee is working on. Updating that code. But what I've actually asked them to do is write guidelines so that when people come in, they, that they've. That they have guidelines to apply that code. And that's really what needs to be done are the guidelines. Cause they're finding that a lot of time, you, that code is difficult to rewrite, cause we don't, we don't wanna put, um. Significant parameters on, on our historic district because it makes it very difficult for people to afford to move forward with any kind of updates.
Right.
And improvements to their homes. So they're, they're running into that issue. They're very clear on what they are doing and not doing. But as, as a result of writing the guidelines, they're also looking at the code and trying to understand how it's being applied and. And, and finding deficits in the code. So I've asked them to go forward and do that and then we'll put together some guidelines, but then, then. Maybe they can report back to the planning commission, yes. Report to the planning commission to give you their findings.
First, they recommend to council.
You would have to recommend to council.
Okay.
It's the planning commissioner, but they would recommend, they would give you their findings, what, what they, so that will alleviate that.
I understand. And that, that is the, the same issues we had with it, we had to do with money and, and just. How it was being unevenly enforced, but, uh. There are other issues they might not notice, so I, I'll just.
Well, then you can bring that up when you get it.
Do you have any idea when we'll hear from them?
No, they're working on it pretty, they're trying to work on it every meeting that they have. They're looking at the design guidelines.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a little bit of time. It's, it's, they're getting pretty in detail and in depth into what they're doing.
And if we can just yeah, well, we'll look at the minutes, I guess.
Okay. We're adjourned. Wait, before you adjourn, I'm sorry.
Already adjourned.
Uh I wanted to mention um, all he is, term is up. It was up, so he's not absent. He's just not on the planning commission. And we haven't gotten an application for reinstatement, so I'm just letting you know that for the record. Yeah, you bet.
Who else is up?
Nobody.
Nobody.
So um, let's see, just, just for the record, Felicia, you were reappointed in twenty twenty-one. So your uh term.
Commissioner Hayes.
Excuse me, what did I say?
Felicia.
Oh, Felicia, sorry.
So you want me to go over?
Years, what can I say?
Do you want me to go over?
Yeah, yeah, you have the.
So um, Ollie, Ollie's was up. Um, we have uh Felicia twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, Mark Davis, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, Anna DiMatto, twelve twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, Commissioner Volkart, uh eight eighteen, twenty twenty-six, and then Lisa Shapiro, twenty uh two thirty, twenty twenty-six, and Joy Riley, nine eight, twenty twenty-six.
So termination dates, though, um the language is is really poor and uh for our, um so one of the things that we're gonna be asking about um or suggesting for twenty twenty-four is that we revisit the the bylaws um for staggering terms based on numbered seats with ending terms on twelve thirty-one. And it has always been the case that the terms end on twelve thirty-one, so always um so you, you were mixing up their start date and their end date, and really it's twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five or twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-six that we have recorded at this point. And what we're hoping to bring back is a, every, either every odd year, three go out or four go out. Um, that, you know, based on your seat number or every even year, I think is a better, is a better choice, but uh but the way it's set up, the way the bylaws re, just, I invite you to take a look at them. It's no wonder we can't keep up with it, right? It's just so bizarre. Um, I've never really read language like that, so.
How many people's terms are up at twelve thirty-one, twenty-five?
Three, you have you, Felicia, and Anna.
Right, and then we have the rest of the terms up at the end of twenty twenty-six on four-year terms, which means those terms won't end again until three more years later, which is odd. Um it should be staggered every either even year or odd year, so three and four, three and four, three and four. Yeah. Okay, so we're gonna, uh I, Kristen and I are gonna talk about that. And we'll bring back suggested changes at some time in twenty twenty-four. Now we're adjourned. Thank you.